Very good. Thank you. Welcome everyone to the March 8th Barrington Select Board Meeting. As Chairperson of the Barrington Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor, as a result of COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with that emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video and other electronic means. We're utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting. Phone participation can take place by dialing 603-664-0240 and entering conference ID 676749973, or hashtag. Video participation can be found at bit.ly/ Barr-ss-b. We are providing public notice of all necessary information for accessing the meeting. We've previously given this notice to the public. Instructions have all been provided on the town website at www.barrington.nuhamshire.gov. We're providing a mechanism for the public to alert this public body during the meeting if problems exist, and that mechanism is to call 664-0146 if you have trouble with access, or email administration@barrington.nuhamshire.gov. If for any reason the public could not access the meeting, we would adjourn the meeting and reschedule the meeting. Please note that all votes during the Select Board meeting will be taken via roll call. Let's start the meeting with a roll call attendance of the Select Board, beginning with Select Person Eyre.
Daniel Eyre, I'm in Hanover, New Hampshire. Dr. Williams, Dr. Williams, Hinkyard Hospital. There is a gentleman in the room with me who is from Milford, New Hampshire. He's sleeping at the time. He will not influence my vote. He has no barons on Barrington, New Hampshire. And I will not reveal any more information for due to his privacy. Thank you.
Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
George Bailey, 19 Chesley Drive. I'm home right now in my office. My wife and cat are downstairs, and neither one of those will influence my vote. It's good to see you again. Thank you.
Andrew Knapp, 96 Lindsey Point Road. I am in the office. My wife, son, and mother-in-law are out in the main part of the house. And the dog? And I don't think any of them will be influencing my vote.
Jim Sikosha, 21 James Henry Drive. I'm home alone with my dogs.
And Tracy Hardikoff, 48 Stone Farm Road. I am currently home with just the dog, but I will have a husband and grown son later on in the building. No one will be influencing my vote. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay. I did myself a discourtesy here, and I moved around my agenda material, so one moment if you would. I think first up is an appointment to... Yep, here we go. Sorry. First up is an appointment for Donna Masucci. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Masucci.
Masucci. And at this time, I think there's been an amendment where Donna has requested to be an alternate for the Planning Board. Is that correct, T.A. McGyver?
Yes.
Okay, so you all have material on Donna. Would anyone like to make a motion to reappoint her into the position of an alternate for the Planning Board? I see Select Person Sikosha has made that motion.
Second.
And I have a second by Select Person Bailey. Could I have a roll call vote if there are no other questions, comments, or concerns?
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you again, Donna, for being willing to serve. I'm not sure if she's on here, but can... Well, does she have to redo her oath, Connor?
She will have to do a new oath indicating alternate, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I'll leave that up to you folks to coordinate. Go ahead, Jim Sikosha.
I was just getting ready for your next one.
Oh, no. Actually, what's coming up next is public comment. Total of 15 minutes. Three minutes per person. Select Board members can certainly speak as members of the general public as well. But if anyone would like to speak, you can mouse over your screen in the upper right-hand corner is a hand. If you click on that, it will alert us you'd like to speak. If you're on your phone and would like to speak, you can press star six to unmute yourself, pause for a moment or two, and then let us know that you'd like to speak. At this time, the Chair recognizes Vice Chair Knapp.
Hi. I would like to take this moment to think back three years ago of a cold snowy day where you and Steve stood outside, shticking, and putting a freezing cold effort into making yourself part of our Select Board, and thank you for all that you've done. Everything from helping with TA succession management and put Connor into the position that he is, helping with some key Town Hall position hires, creating the compensation study, helping get the materials out that moved the Town Hall forward to get that passed, and all the numerous other contributions and your level-headed and balanced approach that you've brought to the town. It's all recognized and appreciated. I view you as our Mary Poppins for us, and thank you for everything that you have done for the town of Barrington, the effort that you've put in, and the three years that you've done. And if, just so anyone knows, you can still do a write-in campaign for Tracy tomorrow to carry on for another three-year term.
Thank you, Vice Chair Knapp. That was very nice. The Chair will recognize Select Person Bailey.
Thank you very much. This past week, we had a little difficulty with our furnace in our house, and I had to call the Barrington Fire Department, which responded to come out and do some air testing for you. And I just want to publicly acknowledge, from the chief right on down to the young person that took the call and for the firefighters that came out. Gene and I really appreciate it, and I'd like to publicly say thank you very much. Thank you.
Great services. Any other hands up that I can't see, T.A. McGyver? Or has anyone unmuted themselves that needs to speak?
I see nothing further coming through on my end.
Very good. Thank you.
I was just gonna say that we can't rebuttal to what Andy said. I mean, he said it perfect, so he just shut me down.
I know there's a few of you on this board I've convinced to run for numerous years, so thank you for that. And there's others of you that I convinced to step up, and you got yourself into a whole bunch of work, but you're doing a great job. So thank you all. Go ahead, Dan Eyre.
Yeah, I thank you for your services and to... You made me state, tell me where you live, so I will lean on you in the future for your knowledge and stuff and your dedication to the town of Barrington.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Next up is your review of meeting minutes from February 22nd. I've reviewed this previously. Does anyone have any changes that they need to make? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion for acceptance. I have a motion by Select Person Bailey. I have a second by Select Person Sikosha. Could I have a roll call vote on accepting the meeting minutes, beginning with Select Person Eyre?
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha.
And Hardikoff, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next is our staff report by our Town Administrator. Connor, Mr. McGyver, you're on.
Thank you so much. First, on behalf of the town's employees, I would also like to recognize and appreciate Tracy, your past three years of the Select Board. You've demonstrated a tremendous amount of support for not only the town, but also its employees, and it's recognized and thoroughly appreciated. So thank you. I'd also like to recognize the March work anniversaries. So being the first meeting in March. This year, we have some long-tenured employees, which is terrific. Starting with Steve and Paul in the Highway Department. This is his 21st year in the town of Barrington. Eric Lindsey is Assistant Fire Chief. Similarly to Chief Walker, some of the folks that joined the Fire Department as volunteer members participated in the fire service long before drawing a paycheck. Our financial system typically comes from... The work anniversary comes from their first paycheck that they drew. So, but certainly a good opportunity to recognize Assistant Chief Lindsey. Peter Royce is Treasurer, 16 years. Now Larry Kuhn, former full-time member of the Fire Department, and still serves with us for 15 years. Will Lenharth in the Fire Department for 15 years. Amanda Barber, our current Police Sergeant, one of two sergeants with five years. And Melissa Hewitt, our Library Director, has been with us three years. So certainly appreciate the tenure of those employees and hope for many more work anniversaries. Two other quick things. First, I just want to also take an opportunity to acknowledge the bravery and really heroism of our Police Department, specifically our Deputy Chief Daniel Brooks. As most of you know, there was an incident last week that the Police Department responded to. There's been information in the news. Unfortunately, one of our officers was shot at and continued, you know, working the scene and doing the best that he could to protect all those involved. And so I think it's... A lot of folks, when they think of Barrington, you know, it's... I even heard it just at the most recent candidate forum. You know, nothing happens in Barrington, and you know, the crime's really low. And I think that tells part of the story. Our brave men and women in law enforcement and all emergency services see a different part of Barrington that where their call volume continues to increase. They continue to put themselves in situations such as that last week to protect the general public. And a lot of times, the situation doesn't rise to a level where it's, you know, covered in the news or necessitates a conversation at a Select Board meeting or otherwise. But they're out there every day protecting and serving and putting themselves in harm's way to keep us all safe. So certainly Deputy Chief Brooks deserves special recognition and appreciation for what he did for the town last week. But also a good opportunity to remind everybody that our other men and women in law enforcement and the fire service put themselves in situations like that regularly in order to keep us all safe. So thank you to all of them. One final point before we move on, and this is bringing this up to the Select Board. It's a situation that developed today. Certainly, we can discuss it more if you think it warrants it. But I suspect that the Select Board will support the direction I recommend. So there's, relating to trash bags, the pay-as-you-throw trash bags in the transfer station, there's really two vendors for those trash bags. We've had the same one for a number of years. We went to place an order because it's time to order some more, and the prices went up. About 13% for a case of large bags and 16.7% for small bags. And so obviously, doing our due diligence, the Transfer Station Administrator got a quote from the other company and started doing some reference checks and quality checks. The other company is actually based out of Maine. And we can save... Or we can... Yeah, so we can save 13% with a case of large bags and 16.7% for a case of small bags, switching vendors. The... We spend between $15,000 and $20,000 a year on bags. And so I believe it technically... I believe it would technically be an exemption to the purchasing policy under the cyclical purchases, which is itemized as an exemption. But I wanted to bring it before the Board so you were aware. And certainly, if you objected, you could object before we change. But we would expect improved quality and less of a cost for the town. And so that's the direction that we intend to go without objection from the Select Board.
Any objections?
Good.
No. Thank you for making us aware.
Absolutely. And that's all from me, Municipal Office Administrator Cottle.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. A few quick things for signature. The meeting minutes that were just approved at this meeting for February 22nd, the oath for Donna Masucci for Planning Board as an alternate. Also, two contracts, one for Stone Hill Consulting and one for the 2021 Corcoran Consulting evaluation. That's up.
Thank you. Very appreciated. Okay. Under Old Business, you have a revised 2021 Select Board goal setting. You wanted to wait on that, I think, until the 22nd. Am I correct in that? I think you wanted to wait and have the other Select Board member that will be taking the open position. Am I correct?
My understanding was that the Select Board was gonna set goals and then know that the new member could add to it once they came on, and setting the goals was important to make sure that department heads could set goals in concert with the goals set by Select Board members. But we can certainly table it again until the next meeting if that's what the Board would like to do.
So your meeting minutes from last meeting indicate the Select Board discussed the current, making the goals measurable, agreed by consensus, to not finalize until the new member is selected. So I just want... You know, I had read the meeting minutes prior to the meeting. Either way, I'm fine as long as that additional member can weigh in.
And we can certainly get a progress update from Select Board members if they're happy with the changes so far and bring it to the 22nd meeting.
George, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to say that I reread these and I find nothing there, and I'd like to make a motion to carry it through to the next meeting.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, I'm fine with it either way.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor of carrying it through to the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and aye. So motion carries. You'll be revisiting that with your fifth member next meeting on the 22nd. The Town Meeting Ballot Session, March 9th. So some of you will be available and some of you will not, and we will understand either way. But we're being asked to fill a schedule tomorrow. And anything we cannot fill to have Select Board members available, we'll be putting pro temps in place and keeping a schedule for the state to review. I can cover from about 4:15 till the close of the voting. Select Person Eyre?
I'm in the same timeframe. In the late afternoon.
Okay. Select Person Bailey?
I'll take the morning, 8 o'clock to noon.
I'm gonna hop on with George as well in the morning.
Okay, so I have George and Select Person Sikosha from 8 to noon. I've got... And Andy?
I would have to be from about 3:30. Then I'll miss the Technology Committee meeting, and I can be there till close.
Okay.
Which is part of why I sent back my tentative to Connor.
Okay, so from noon to 4... Yeah, noon to 4:15 will be... There'll be a gap for pro temps.
Great.
Okay. And if anything arises with my day that I get free sooner, I certainly will make myself available. I just don't anticipate that happening. So thank you all very much for one more piece of your volunteerism. So thank you.
Just so you're aware, I'm tied up in meetings until... I have a meeting that's supposed to end at 3, but I have a funny feeling it's gonna run a little late, which is why I'm saying 3:30.
Okay, sounds good. Advertising surplus equipment, so brought before you was a sealed bid process for the 1996 International and 2003 International. Does anyone want to make a motion to put those items out to seal the process? Go ahead, Dan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to be clear and transparent. I might bid on this in my cooperation with other people and stuff. So I want transparency. No one knows.
Okay, sealed bid process. Go ahead, Select Person Sikosha.
I would like to make a motion to advertise the surplus equipment for a sealed bid.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a second by Select Person Bailey. Thank you. Roll call vote on that, beginning with Select Person Eyre.
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha.
And Hardikoff, aye. We'll proceed with the sealed bid process on that. Thank you. There's a recommendation brought before you for the top-ranked firms for professional engineering services. As you know, we had a nice response to this. There's a recommendation to accept the top three, and specifically CMA engineers. And I don't know if we have pricing. Is that correct, Connor?
Correct, yes. So this is a qualifications-based selection process. So what the Select Board would be doing is identifying the top-ranked firm and authorizing me to enter negotiations with the firm for pricing. And the way that I have the motion structured right now would allow for no further action by the Select Board contingent upon satisfactory negotiation of the contract. So if that's the Board's intention, that's how the motion is crafted.
And what do we... Does this exceed our typical RFP process amount?
We...
Yes.
Yeah, we made the entire process as consistent with our purchasing policy.
That's why we interviewed... We had, what, 27 firms that responded to it?
12, yeah, but a lot.
I don't know why I had 27 in my brain, but we had, yeah, 12 firms. We whittled that down. Like, I can show you the packet of paper that I have from firms that responded. Had great response, had a really great board reviewing it. Jeff Brand was all over this, along with Connor, Marcia, John Hawkins. And we had very productive meetings, whittled it down to these three, interviewed the three, and we're collectively satisfied with the three firms that we interviewed and prioritized which three firms we thought, kind of in the order that we thought they would best fit the town.
Very good. So would anyone like to make a motion to allow our Town Administrator to enter into negotiations for a contract with CMA?
I'll make the motion.
And I have a second by Select Person Sikosha, and could I have a roll call vote on that, beginning with Select Person Eyre?
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all for that. Up next, under New Business, is the paving RFP, Request for Proposal. It would be advertised March 9th, due back to the town by April 7th, and a recommendation would be made by the Board. The Select Board's being asked to approve what's been put before you in the proposed 2021 paving project RFP. Questions, comments, concerns, or will entertain a motion?
So moved.
I was just gonna ask, I always like to hear Dan's comments around paving, so I was...
As I was raising my hand, I did review it today and everything, and I think it's a very good job. Was done with it, and we should get some good bids.
Okay, so do I have a second, Select Person Eyre?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a first by Select Person Bailey, a second by Select Person Eyre. There are no other questions, comments, or concerns. We'll move to a roll call vote, beginning with Select Person Eyre.
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all very much.
Just one item, Chair Hardikoff?
Yes.
I just wanna make clear, I really appreciate the Board's support there. This is an area where the town has made dramatic improvements in bidding out the paving work. Having somebody who spent almost four decades of their career in the private sector bidding on paving projects come behind the scenes and improve our bid requirements in listing has greatly improved the process. It improved the quality that we ended up with last year, and we hope that will continue. So thank you for Mark, for the time and effort you've put into that, and obviously demonstrated by the Board's swift and unequivocal support. So thank you.
Could I take things slightly out of sequence, just to make for ease of the meeting? Is that okay with you folks? I just want to talk about Select Board reorganization and the committee assignments first. Is that okay with each of you?
Yes, fine.
Okay, so just your Select Board will be reorganizing as of your meeting on the 22nd. Give thought to the next series of chairperson and vice chairperson that will be leading. As you know, you know, Andy knows, because if you're late to a meeting, he has to read the entire declaration from, what is it, 91A or something? But anyway, give thought to how, whether you'd like to serve as the chairperson or vice chair and how you might go about that. And then in reference to committee assignments, give thought to not only your time, but what days of the week work best for you. I know I took on assignments this year thinking I would be far more available than I actually ended up being available. So I know it's difficult, and it's a lot of additional work in addition to Select Board work, but very rewarding in keeping us informed. Go ahead, Select Person Eyre.
The Conservation Committee I'm a full member on in the liaison, and the Town Land Committee interacts a lot with them. So I feel my best spot is to stay where I'm at, and there's a lot of time involved and stuff. And I can put out a lot of fires that I can talk to. Everyone has very transparent what's going on. So, and then above and around that, I will make other decisions. But I feel, I should say, on the conservation.
So when... My suggestion is we do what we did last year, which is when you've determined who your chairperson will be, you email your requests in most important order of what works for you and provide three options, and then let the chairperson at that time sort through it. Are you guys all okay with that process? Yes? Okay. So committee assignments and reorg will be coming up, which takes us to our last item of new business, which is the police outside detail rates. Well-written. I read through this, and I think I was better able to understand. Not only is there a contract change, which will take place based on what our townspeople decide in the acceptance of that union contract, but the suggestion is that we move to a more equitable outside detail rate as far as billing. And that would include billing for any officer, but also for our cruisers that would be there as well. Go ahead, Select Person Eyre. Go ahead, Select Person Eyre.
I was very crucial on the Police Department's budget around this specific item because it did not add up to me with increases and stuff. It wasn't a benefit for the town. And that was, I was very negative of the Police Department's stuff. So I feel this needs to be addressed to balance it out in my mind, but it's up to the whole Board. Thank you.
Okay, so do we have any other questions, comments, or concerns, or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so the motion would be to accept the new billable rate as published at, looks like $68 per hour and $17 per hour for the cruiser? And I have a second from Select Person Eyre. Could I have a roll call vote, please, beginning with Select Person Eyre?
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha.
And Hardikoff, aye. The motion carries. Thank you. Before public comment, could I have a report out, beginning with Select Person Eyre, on any committees?
I have been tied up with personal stuff. I have been contacted with some of people on the Board, and there's nothing major that I know I need to report out.
Okay. Select Person Bailey?
Thank you very much. I wanted to turn around, let everybody know that I sent a note to Mark on how well his people were doing during snow removal, what have you. I sent him a note. I also sent a note to Fire Chief on how they handled the incident at my house with gas and what have you. I want to thank very much. Also, I'm going to have the library meetings tomorrow, and that's all I have to report.
Very good. Select, Vice Chair Knapp?
So the Planning Board met last Tuesday. If any of you folks remember, we had a power outage last Tuesday, or some of the town had a power outage. I not only happened to be one of the people that had a power outage here at my house, but I also had a power outage up north and a house that had just dropped below 40 degrees. And with a near-death phone, I did not make the Planning Board meeting because I was taking propane tanks and heaters and heading north to get heat into a house.
Understood. Select Person Sikosha, report out?
So we have the townwide egg hunt coming up. That's March 20th to April 1st. There's a convo between the library and the rec. There's gonna be eggs everywhere over Barrington, in the businesses, on the trails, wherever they walk. And then there's also a drive-through event, and that's gonna be the extravaganza. And you get a kit to... It's a take-home kit for an egg hunt. Other than that, life is good over at the rec department.
Very good.
Is there a date in the drive-through event?
Oh, yes, it is, it is March 20th to April, oh, no, April 3rd.
So I will do a quick thank you. We had a teacher here in town who went out with other volunteers on our trail systems and built snow people, not just snowmen, but snow people, on the trails, and then, no, they were female too, so snow people.
What do you know?
I'm gonna get you guys on this personhood thing if it kills me. No, and, and the kids were encouraged to get out there and experience the snow, walk the trails and find them. And I just thought that was a really neat, fun, and free idea to get kids outside and moving. And then I did want to take a moment and just recognize that our highway department has had, you know, a pretty traumatic week as well, and that we're thinking of them, and they are in our thoughts and our prayers, and we're always sending good vibes their way as employees here of the town. So, on to public comments, please. We have 15 minutes, three minutes per person, and I see select person Bailey, go ahead.
I really want to turn around and let everybody know that I did not omit Tracy and the wonderful job that she did over the years. I had the opportunity to send her a private email, but then again, I can tell you that we all learned quite a bit from having Tracy here. We should be able to pass any test when it comes to PC culture and what have you. But again, Tracy, I really, like I want to say, I hope you and your husband both enjoy your retirement, and I hope that once your project is finished downtown, that you will get out and do your job, and don't be called Mrs. Gonna Do, just go ahead and do it. Good luck, take care.
Yes, thank you, George, any other public comments?
Tracy, if I may, really quick?
Oh, go ahead, Jesse.
Okay, I just really quickly just wanted to give everybody an update on the before and after school care registration, as that typically is a hot topic around Barrington at this time. We successfully ran our before and after school care registration this past Saturday. It went extremely smoothly, and as of today, at about 12 o'clock, we did not have a waitlist. We were hovering right around that closed, you know, pretty much full number, but at this time, we were able to accommodate all of those requests. So I just wanted to let everybody know that that process has been completed.
Excellent, thank you to our rec department, that is excellent, go ahead, Andy.
I would just like to say, my wife and I were one of those people hovering around refreshing, like, three devices to get on there, so I'm really happy to hear that, that's wonderful news, thank you very much, Jesse.
There's a lot of grateful working parents that are, yes, absolutely. Any other public comments? And the last thing I'll ask is, do we have a need for non-public tonight?
Yes, one brief personnel.
Personnel, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about that, yes. So could I have a motion to, and I'm sorry, George, I saw your hand up, did you want to say something publicly?
I'm sorry, Mitch, the only thing I'm gonna say is, everybody remember tomorrow's the day to vote? Get out, and let's get the vote in, there's a lot of important things that have to be decided.
Let's hear your voices.
Yep, let's hear your voices, we'll see you all there, thank you, good reminder, thank you, George. So could I have a motion to enter non-public at 7:03 for purpose of personnel?
I'll make the motion, or second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Nap, and I see a signal from Vice, from select person Sakosha. So could I have, sorry, too many S's in that. But I have a vote, beginning with select person Air, to enter non-public now at 7:04.
Air I.
Bailey I.
Nap I.
Sakosha.
And Hardikoff I, I'll meet you over there, and we'll be back to report out when we're done, thank you.
Hello. That was fast. You were in it, you were in it simultaneously. Must have been.
I don't know. Just trying to make it quick.
Yeah, less than an hour. George, muted.
I'm ready to go.
Okay, report out, please, Town Administrator MacGyver.
Yes, so the select board met in non-public to finalize the review of the town administrator's performance evaluation. The town administrator and the select board reviewed all sixteen essential position functions, performed a rating and offered feedback on each. The cumulative average score from the select board demonstrated the town administrator's exceeding expectations in the collective essential position functions. Additionally, the select board took a vote in non-public to agree to a contract extension with the town administrator. The term of the contract extension will carry the town administrator's contract through July first of 2025.
Excellent. And May, by the way, and we're grateful for that in this growing town of Barrington that will have your expertise and leadership. Thank you, Connor, for being willing to extend that. And thank you all for your hard work on the performance review. It is seven twenty-five. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I don't think we should approve it. I mean, it is your last meeting, and it's not like nine thirty yet.
I know, I'm sorry. Seven twenty-six.
I'll second it.
Thank you all. I have a first from air, a second from nap. Roll call vote, or all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Air is still on the fence. Let me think about this.
I don't think we should adjourn either. I think we should have a few more discussions.
Okay, now I'm going to make it a roll call vote, beginning with select person air, please.
I need a little more information to make that informed decision. Can I please have two minutes to table this?
No. I just need a vote.
I, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, tell me how many.
Air, 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 aye.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could you tell me how many pages were in Connor's document, please? I seem to misplace mine.
Hang on, I can find it for you.
Bailey, aye.
Thank you.
Since I have the right to filibuster, I figure I will read New Hampshire Election Procedure Manual for all here.
I would, I could use that.
Page one.
No.
The election officials of New Hampshire.
Timeout.
I vote.
Thank you, select person Skoshia.